Let's call this meeting to order. It is 6:01, 6:02? From my angle, it looks like 2:00. I just want to remind everybody, um, let's see. Anybody who would like to speak before the Planning Commission, please complete a blue speaker request form and give it to the clerk to my right, prior to the item, okay? And later on, you'll have a chance for a public comment. You can fill out a speaker's card for that also. All right, roll call, please.
Commissioner Charleston?
Here.
Commissioner Hovey?
Here.
Commissioner Laney?
Here.
Commissioner Lee?
Here.
Vice Chair Oblea?
Here.
Pledge of Allegiance. Commissioner Lee, would you please lead us in the pledge? Join me in the pledge. Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, indivisible, and just as for all.
Thank you. All right, the first thing on the agenda is commission reorganization. Clerk? Do we have anybody gonna say something about this? Brandon? We have a presentation?
Yeah, prior to that item, we were going to introduce the new planning commissioner, Houston Laney.
That's my job.
Welcome.
Welcome. The city is pleased to welcome Houston Laney to the Eastville Planning Commission. Houston is appointed by Planning Commissioner, uh, to the Planning Commission by Councilmember Lorin Moore at the December 12th meeting and took his oath of office at that, at that meeting. Houston has been with Southern California Association of Governments, also known as SCAG, since 2010 and commenced his current role as Public Affairs Specialist in July of 2018, working on executive communication, content development, outreach, and event management. Previously at SCAG, he worked as a legislative analyst for nearly seven years, where he helped develop the agency's annual state and federal legislative priorities and performed extensive analysis and interpretation of transportation, land use, and environmental policy. Houston graduated from Cal Poly Pomona in 2003 with a Bachelor of Arts in Political Science. He obtained a Master's of Arts in Diplomacy from Norwich University. Now, we share this, I got a Master's from there as well. In 2008, as well as a Master's of Science in Communication from Purdue University in 2017, so he's dual masters, so diplomacy and communication. We shouldn't have any fights up there on the, I'm just kidding. And then, um, yes, and so, welcome, welcome to the commission and we look forward to working with you, Houston. Thank you.
Brian, did you want to mention Commissioner Hovey?
Didn't we introduce her at the last one?
Well, that she's never been appointed to a full term as a planning commissioner?
Thank you. So Commissioner Hovey was also reappointed for another term and so was everybody else up there on the December 12th. And so, um, that, it wasn't, but Councilmember Jocelyn reappoint, uh, reconfirmed Andrea Hovey because Andrea was originally promoted, uh, pointed up there by Adam Rush and so, and everybody else was reappointed by their council members respectively up there and they didn't make any changes, so. So we now have a full commission, so. Luckily, we have a full commission and they were able to do that all on the 12th. So we're very excited to have everybody. Thanks. Sorry, Andrea, I, I thought, I, I thought I, I thought I already announced her, but now I'm just digging a hole.
Mr. Harrington, how do we do this first? Do we do it together with one lump sum with a?
For the selection of chair and vice chair?
Vice chair or separately?
Um, we do it one at a time, so nominations for consideration for chair and then take a vote and then nominations for vice chair and then take a vote.
Very good. So chair would be the first?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have any nominees for chair?
I'll, I'll make a motion to nominate Commissioner Oblea as the chair for next, uh, for 2019.
Second?
I'll accept.
Commissioner Charleston?
Aye.
Commissioner Hovey?
Aye.
Commissioner Laney?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee?
Aye.
Vice Chair Oblea?
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you, everybody, for your vote of confidence. Uh, now, let's open the nomination for vice chair. I would like to nominate Commissioner Lee as vice chair.
I second.
Do you accept?
I will accept.
Uh, roll call, please.
Commissioner Charleston?
Aye.
Commissioner Hovey?
Aye.
Commissioner Laney?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee?
Aye.
Chair Oblea?
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero.
Very good. Congratulations. Okay, uh, shall we go on or do we want to reorganize the nameplates or should we do that another time?
I can switch around the nameplates right now.
Okay. Well, this next item, item four, will be public comment. Any member of the public may address the commission on items within the commission's subject matter jurisdiction but which are not listed on this agenda during public comment. However, no action may be taken on matters that are not part of the posted agenda. We request comments made on the agenda to be made at the time the item is considered and that the comment be limited to three minutes per person. So if you want to make a comment to the commission right now on a matter that is not on the agenda, you need to fill out a blue card. I don't think there's anybody that wants to say anything right now. So we'll go on to item five. Is there any additions or deletions to today's agenda?
Staff would like to request to add, to add item 7.2 Code Enforcement Update.
We'd actually like to call it Community Enhancement and Safety Update.
Do we need to have a, a, a vote on this by the commission to accept that addition?
Yes, please.
Well, Mr. Chair, one more item. If we could move item 8.2 ahead of 8.1 since it's just a continuation and to conclude that item before we get into the business.
Okay, so we want to move 8.2 to above 8.1 and we want to add 7.2 to the agenda? Do I have a motion to accept this?
I make a motion to accept.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Charleston?
Aye.
Commissioner Hovey?
Aye.
Commissioner Laney?
Aye.
Vice Chair Lee?
Aye.
Chair Oblea?
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero.
Okay, so that goes on down to item six, Consent Calendar. Do we have any comments or does anybody want to pull anything from that consent calendar? If not, do we have a motion to accept the consent calendar?
Mr. Chair, I would recommend our, our new commissioner abstain from voting on the minutes of the previous meeting.
I agree.
Was not here.
So do we have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Motion to accept consent calendar.
Second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Charleston?
Aye.
Commissioner Hovey?
Aye.
Vice Chair Lee?
Aye.
Chair Oblea?
Aye.
Motion passes four to zero.
Okay, item number seven, Presentation 7.1, Introduction of Economic Development Manager, Kimberly Wright. Mr. Jones?
Kimberly, if you can join us at the podium. Prior to Kimberly's employment with the City of Eastville, she worked for the County of Riverside Economic Development Agency, for EDA, for over 20 years at EDA. Kimberly began her career working with the Economic Development Division, where she managed and attended trade shows, was integral in responding to business expansion leads and assisted with the county's fast-track permit processing program. At the time of her departure from the county, she was the Assistant Marketing Manager for EDA's 22 divisions and provided support to the county Executive Office and Board of Supervisors. Kimberly acted as a marketing manager and media spokesperson for the county's signature events, including the Riverside County Fair National Date Festival and the Jaclyn Cochran Air Show. Throughout her time with EDA, Kimberly partnered with many of the county's cities for various economic development outreach and attraction efforts, including attendance at the International Council Shopping Centers. Kimberly earned her bachelor's degree from the University of California, Riverside, in Economic Administrative Studies and lives in North Fontana with her husband and four children. And so Kimberly's now been with us for about two months and we're excited to introduce you to her and we're excited to see where she can help us in enhancing the quality of our development and attracting businesses and retaining our businesses and helping our businesses grow in Eastville, so thank you.
Just quickly say, good evening, Chairman Oblea and Council, um, commissioners and city staff and public. I am very honored to be in this position. I really look forward to working with you all and with the wonderful staff. I feel extremely privileged to work somewhere with so much going on and so much growth right in front of me, so I'm very excited to be here. Thank you so much.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Welcome to Eastville.
Item 7.2, another presentation?
The Community Enhancement and Safety Team, Senior Officer Mario.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, this is in response to some questions from the commission at the last meeting about some issues that have been coming up and so we promised to have Mario here and he is here.
And, and before you start, Mario, just wanted to highlight that on December 12th, City Council approved a rebranding our code enforcement team to a Community Enhancement and Safety Team. They still have all the rights and responsibilities of code enforcement, except for the goal with our municipal code and our zoning code and everything that they enforce is to gain compliance of enhancing the quality of our community and safety of our community. And so the purpose of both of, all of those documents is to enhance, for community enhancement and safety. And so we figured, much like what Rancho Cucamonga did, is rebranding our, our, our team to focus on what we want rather than how we're going to punish you and, or how we're going to do you, what we're going to do to you if you don't comply. And so they still have, they, they still have all the rights and responsibilities and by California law as a code enforcement officer and write citations as a code enforcement officer. But we will be rebranding their shirts and trucks as a Community Enhancement and Safety Officer of, for the city because a lot of things that happen in our community and Mario will highlight, most of what they do is working with residents to, that are either not talking with each other or don't know each other and one resident will call and complain about another resident rather than just talking to each other. And so they call us to say, hey, can you tell my neighbor to mow their yard? Or they're, they have tagging on their garage or they have this or they left their garbage cans out too long or, um, you know, on street sweeping day, they, they didn't move their cars or whatever it might be, you know, a lot of things. And so what, what a lot of what we do through our Community Enhancement and Safety Team is through education and, and bringing awareness to, to the municipal code and, and how people are in violation. And I, I might be a little off, Mario, but probably 90% of our, our cases or issues are addressed through compliance rather than the tool of code enforcement. And so much like our law enforcement are called peace officers because our goal is to, to achieve peace in our communities and we don't call them gun officers because they, um, you know, we don't need to have a code enforcement because that's one of our tools to, to gain compliance, but our goal is compliance of enhancing our community and safety, so. And, and really, they're the front lines of public safety in our community and the eyes and ears in our community. We're in our residence, residential neighborhoods quite a bit and in our retail shopping centers, we're keeping an eye on the community and we respond to a lot of things that can escalate into crime over time and, and attract the wrong element if you don't address it quickly and, and stay on top of it. And so we, and, but we also have a huge compassion component of our Community Enhancement and Safety Team and even today, our Community Enhancement Safety Team had, each year, we're starting a tradition to identify family that could use a brighter Christmas or brighter holiday season. And so at our holiday party that you, many of you are at, we entice you to buy more raffle tickets with cash and we use that cash along with our Eastville Police Department, who brought a lot of toys and clothes, to bless a family that could use a little extra brightness in their Christmas spirit. And so we delivered those today around 3:30 and it sure made three, three young boys and, and a young lady and their mother super, super hyped, uh, excited to experience that, that blessing. And so, you know, without them, seeing the needs in some of our homes and our communities that a lot of people don't realize are out there, we are able to go out there and, and connect them with people that are a lot, even like our social service needs with our faith-based community. They're always looking for, to serve our community and so we're often connecting families that need something with our social services. And so it's been, it's, it's been a great honor to, to see how we're able to have a positive impact in the community and, and enhance the quality of the community and, and safety of the community. So with that, I'll let Mario give his update on our Community Enhancement and Safety Team.
Thank you, Brian. Good evening, Chair Oblea, Commissioners, city staff, and members of the public. For the benefit of Commissioner Laney, we sometimes give code enforcement updates, but now it would be code enhancement safety team updates. So we give these reports as requested. They could be monthly, quarterly, or as you requested, as you request. Code enforcement has issued courtesy notice to a few properties located on the 1400 block of Chandler, between Hall and Archibald. It's on the north side of Chandler. Some of the violations were observed with trashcans in public view to include appliances, debris, rubbish, and trashcans, overgrown vegetation, inoperable vehicles. Some properties had graffiti and some had broken windows. Others lacked rental and business registration, so we addressed those properties. I know that the last planning commission, this was brought up, so we're addressing those issues as we speak and we're currently working with, with residents to come into compliance. We also address issues on the businesses, on the businesses located at the 6900 block of Hamner and Riverboat. And once again, we issued notices there. Some of the violations were exposed wiring, trash debris in the trashcans, overflow of trash, of trashcans, and storage of materials in public view, which is in front of the businesses. So once again, we can give code enforcement updates as requested. This concludes my report. Are there any questions for me?
May I ask if there's any questions?
No.
Thank you.
No, thank you.
Thank you. I just wanted to say that we will be working on New Year's Eve and part of that is to, we can, um, hopefully by working on New Year's Eve, we can assist the deputies on any, anything that comes up and also one of the things is we're going to be addressing illegal fireworks. So hopefully that can be a deterrent towards illegal fireworks, so we will be working on New Year's Eve. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I have one comment and this is for Commissioner Laney. So when we have Commissioner comments, we have the, it's really a luxury of ours. If there's things in the city that you notice that staff can help us with, we'll bring them up and say, hey, we'd like support on this. And it may be because your neighbor or people you know or see at the store and if they, once they realize you're on commission, they approach you and just say, hey, what's going on with this? Why is it like this? Why am I getting jammed because I'm not mowing my yard? And these people, you know, aren't cleaning their yard at all. So it's simple like that and that's, that's how the response was tonight, just so you know.
Most of the time when we issue a notice, a lot of the times residents don't know that they're in violation and some do. So we get 90%, Brian is right, we do get 90% of the compliance right off the bat by either educating the residents or issuing a notice and then we have a 10% that don't comply and then we unfortunately have to issue a site. But our goal is at the end of the day is to get voluntary compliance and bring everybody in compliance within our city's code. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mario.
Let's go on to public hearing, item eight. Um, now this is, we're going to have four public hearings. If anybody's here to speak on any of the specific agenda items, you could fill out a blue card and when that item comes up before us, you'll have a chance to speak. So you can see the clerk for the card. Or do they have them in the back?
The comment cards are in the back.
Okay. So item 8.1, uh, Conditional Use Permit Amendment for Chevron Station.
Actually, Mr. Chair, the commission voted to do 8.2 first.
Oh, that's right. You're right, you're right, you're right. Thank you. 8.2, um, the self-storage facility. Mr. Norris?
Yeah, Mr. Chair and members of the commission. Staff recommends that you continue this item to your regular meeting in February. The City Council last week continued this, their discussion of the general plan amendment and zone change to their January 23rd meeting. So we'd like you to continue this to your February meeting and depending on the council's decision in January, this may or may not be an item for you to consider in February.
Okay, do we need a motion to continue it or? Yes?
Yes, please.
Can I have a motion?
I make a motion. We continue to the February meeting.
We have a second?
I second.
We have first and second. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Charleston?
Aye.
Commissioner Hovey?
Aye.
Commissioner Laney?
Aye.
Vice Chair Lee?
Aye.
Chair Oblea?
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero.
All right, let's go on to 8.1, uh, the Conditional Use Permit Amendment for Chevron Station.
Yes, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. This is a, an amendment to a conditional use permit originally granted in 2014 for sale of alcohol at the convenience store, which is now Chevron, at Riverside and Hamner. Russell Toler, one of our planners, is here to make that presentation and I will turn it over to him for that. Russell.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. So as Eric said, this is a request to amend the conditional use permit for an existing CUP at the Chevron Gas Station Convenience Store. Sorry, guys. Are we moving? There you go. Okay, there we are. So the, the location of this Chevron convenience store is at the southeast corner of Hamner and Riverside. There's a picture of it. This is looking southeast at the convenience store. As you probably know, this was approved in 2014. It was built soon after. It's been operating normally ever since. And a summary of the project. So one of the entitlements that was required for this development was a conditional use permit because the convenience store would be selling beer and wine for off-site consumption. At the time, in 2014, a standard condition of Eastville Police Department would, was to have a size threshold of individual bottles of beer. And that was typically set at 40 ounces. So anything under 40 ounces would be allowed to be sold, but it would have to be in the original multi-pack containers from the manufacturer. More recently, the city has allowed similar uses to sell individual bottles of beer at a lower size, unit size. Other examples are the Chevron that was just approved at the New Merge and Costco and this was lowered to 22 ounces. So the request tonight is that they too may be able to sell these individual bottles of beer at a lower size, at 22 ounces. This is the text that's, that's requested to be changed by the applicant in the original conditions of approval. As you can see, it's going from 40 ounces to 22 ounces and, um, this is obviously in your staff report and your resolution. So the, um, the existing CUP and their conditions of approval, as well as their ABC license, allows the sale of all these types of, all these sizes of beer, whether it be can or bottle. However, the, the, the conditions in their conditional use permit prohibit the sale of any of these sizes individually. So once again, it's the request of the applicant to be able to sell 22-ounce bottles individually. These smaller sizes would still be prohibited to be sold on a one-by-one basis. They would have to be sold in the manufacturing packages. So other than approving the item, the requested amendment tonight, the options are to approve the project with changes, continue the public hearing with recommended revisions or to deny the CUP amendment request. It is staff's recommendation that the, the request be approved. And we are here to answer any questions you may have. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Um, is there any questions for staff at this time, commissioners?
No.
Yes.
Yeah, I just have one question. In the staff report, it says that there have been other similar approvals by the city. How many in general?
We've, we've done several others. The, um, the most recent was the gas station at the Merge project, which was approved with a similar limitation allowing single bottles of that size. We've done other stores, Smart and Final, Target, which are more traditional stores, that also are able to sell individual bottles.
I went by the 7-Elevens today too, just to check it out. They have them. They're selling them there as well too, so.
Any other questions for staff? Then at this time, I want to open the hearing, public hearing. We'll open the public hearing at this time. Do you have any blue cards to speak on this? Or do you have the applicant here to speak?
We have not received any blue card, comment cards.
And does applicant here want to speak at all? No? If not, do you want to say something or? Okay, and we will close the public hearing. Public hearing is now closed.
Are they, are you going to bring up, uh?
Excuse me, sir, there'll be another agenda items that'll be, they'll come up before us. A little bit, yeah.
Public hearings?
Yes, yes, that'll be later. Okay, it's coming up. Hang on.
Thank you.
Let's see. Okay, public hearing is now closed. So we have any other comments or questions for, or discussion on this item?
No.
Daryl? Commissioner Lee?
So this isn't related to actual agenda item, but we did receive a comment regarding some of the left turns or illegal U-turns that were happening at the Chevron Station if, in future, if we can look something, look into that issue because I travel north on Hamner every day and that is an issue because, yeah, because people want to come out of the driveway from Chevron and make left turn on to, uh.
Go south on Hamner.
They want to go, they want to go west on Riverside. So they actually come out and come all the way out to their left lane and want to make left turn from, from Hamner to Riverside, from their driveway. So anyway, um, so I've seen that time and time again. So it's something that we, if we can address that, it's, it's not related to this item, but.
Okay, thank you. Any, any comments or questions? Well, I have a question. How many other convenience stores do we have that have this restriction on the smaller, only the smaller bottles allowed?
This is the only one that we've done that had that restriction. Since then, we've gotten away from the multi-pack only requirement.
And none, none before that?
No, sir, not that I know of.
Okay.
No. This was just a kind of a one-time thing and, you know, we rely on the input from the police department. So I think in the interim, we just changed what our recommendations were and this is the only one that was left like that.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, can we entertain a motion to? Okay, thank you, um, commissioners, can we entertain a motion to, uh, approve this amendment? The CUP?
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have first and second roll call, please.
Commissioner Charleston?
Aye.
Commissioner Hovey?
Aye.
Commissioner Laney?
Aye.
Vice Chair Lee?
Aye.
Chair Oblea?
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero.
All right, very good, let's go on to the next item, item eight point three, uh, Howard Industrial Building at the Ranch. Do we have a presentation?
Yes, we do, Mr. Chair, uh, Melinda Lim from our planning department is here to make that presentation and I will turn it over to her, and Melinda, go ahead and take it away.
Thank you, Ms. Norris, good evening, commissioners, before you tonight is Howard Industrial Buildings at the Ranch. The proposed project is located within the Ranch specific plan and is outlined in yellow. This is the only piece of property that wasn't owned by the applicant for the Ranch specific plan when it was done. The property is, also extends north of the site in the city of Chino. The applicant is seeking approval of a major development review for three industrial buildings, a tenant parcel map number three-seven-six-three-five, Willisum Act contract cancellation and the diminishment of an existing agricultural preserve. Here is the land use map for the Ranch specific plan. The project is located within planning areas seven, eight, and nine, which have light industrial and business park land uses. The Edison easement and the land directly south of it is also part of the project. Buildings one and two, which are in planning areas seven and eight, takes access, truck access off of Summit Drive, which is shown as Street A on the map. This is the overall site plan of the project. The triangle piece on the left is part of the property that's located in Chino. That area is also being developed, but separately. The Edison easement and the property south of it will have no buildings and you can see where Limonite Avenue will cut through the project. We're going to start off with Building One and work our way southward to the detention basin, which is located directly south of the Edison easement. Here is a rendering of Building One, which is viewed from the end of Summit Drive. Here are Building One's elevations. The truck loading area is on the east side and will be visible from the channel. Staff added a, a condition requiring a ten-foot wide landscape area along the channel with two-inch steel fencing and dense landscaping to help screen the loading dock and to be in compliance with a development standard in the specific plan for the Ranch. Here are Building One's elevations again. The red outlines are where staff would like to see architectural improvements. This is a reoccurring theme on all three buildings. For example, this image is of one of the existing industrial buildings within the Ranch and it uses various colors, has building popouts and articulation and this is what we would like to see for this project. Since the docking elevation would be visible from the channel, staff also added a condition for revised elevations for additional windows and awnings to be seen on that elevation as what's shown for Building Two. This is a rendering of Building Two viewed from Limonite Avenue. Here are the elevations for Building Two. The truck loading area will be visible from the channel, Limonite Avenue, and the future Limonite Bridge. Therefore, staff proposes a condition for the applicant to increase their screen wall to be ten feet in height and to provide a landscape berm to make the appearance of the wall six, seem six feet tall from the lance, from the sidewalk. Here are Building Two's elevations again, showing areas which need improvement, especially the slanty corner that is on the south and east elevations because it faces directly at the future Limonite Bridge and has a large expansive blank area. This is a rendering for Building Three viewed from Limonite, same issues as Building One and Two. The entry isn't prominent or inviting, the color of the building is two-tone. There are continuous, um, large vertical glass panels. These are Building Three's elevations. Again, alright, sorry, yes. Uh, this shows the site plan for Building Three. The SE easement and the detention basin, which will be used to service runoff water for all three buildings. Here, the truck loading area is at the rear of the building, which would not be visible from Limonite, but will be visible from the Edison easement. Staff added a condition for a multi-use trail within easement, which will be discussed later. Um, because the loading area is visible to the easements, staff added a condition for the applicant to install two-inch steel fencing with lands, with dense landscaping around the truck yard to provide a pedestrian-friendly environment and for screening. Here are the parts of Building Three staff would like to see improvements. Um, we wanna see the same thing for Building Two's, as Buildings Two for the docking area, the glass windows and the awnings. This is the site plan for the overall project. I mean, the landscape plan for the overall project, it doesn't show the ten-foot wide landscaping along the channel, therefore, staff added a condition that the applicant provide two-inch steel fencing in that landscaping area along the channel to assist with screening of the dock doors and in compliance with the sp- specific plan. There are no trees planted in the parking air, area between Buildings One and Two because it is a designated ALUG open space area, which does not allow objects greater than four feet in height. As with any project that's adjacent to the Edison easement, the applicant is conditioned to put a multi-use trail with landscaping within the easement. This trail will look similar to the trail by the campus and will eventually connect to American Heroes Park when the area west of Building Three gets developed. And in addition, staff added a condition for the applicant to install two-inch steel fencing along the boundary of the basin with landscaping. We've been creating a major trail system within the city at four major project sites. They include the Ranch, the Campus, Walmart, and Cinderella. This pro- project's contribution is a small portion of that trail system. The last two segments of the trail is what I mentioned earlier for that planning area that's adjacent to Building Three and for the pedestrian bridge over the channel. This shows the truck access off of Summit Drive for Building One. This is the only c- truck, car, and pedestrian access for that site. The crosswalk for the nor- northern office leads to employee break area, marking red, and the crosswalk at the southern office leads to the sidewalk on Limonite Drive. For Building Two, trucks share the same driveway access off of Summit Drive as Building One and will have a three-point turn to exit. The orange line that you see here is the emergency access gate, which will only be used by fire and a pedestrian walkway in front of the building will connect to the sidewalk on Limonite. Here, trucks access the site off of the driveway on Limonite and will also need to do a three-point turn for Building Three. A pedestrian walkway is also in front of the building and will connect to the sidewalk on Limonite. Part of the project site is located within Zone C of the ALUG compatibility map, which requires twenty percent of open space area with no objects greater than four feet in height. The areas outlined in blue are the dedicated emergency landing areas for Buildings, um, one and two. The portion of the project that's south of Limonite is within Zone D of the ALUG map and this only requires a ten percent of open space. And the landing area cannot be within the Edison easement or the detention basin as the applicant proposed, which is outlined in blue. In order to comply with this, um, open space requirement, staff added a condition that the applicant relocate the open space area and we suggest the truck loading air, area outlined in green. The applicant would like to subdivide a parcel for individual ownership of each building and for the Limonite Street dedication. The applicant is also seeking recommendation to the council for approval of their Willisum Act cancellation and the diminishment of their agricultural reserve. The Willisum Act provides relief, uh, property tax to owners of farmland and open space in exchange for a ten-year agreement that the land would not be developed. A notice of non-renewal has been filed with Riverside County Recorder Clerk's Office and staff will be presenting this portion of the project to council at the end of January or February. Um, without approval of these two, the applicant would not be able to develop the site. The proposed project is covered under the original EIR and addendum to the EIR prepared for the Ranch specific plan. Appropriate mitigation measures for the proposed project will be implemented via conditions of approval. Here are the findings for the major development review and staff suggests that the project meets all of these findings. Staff recommends that the commission makes the following motions. Approve the major development review, subject to conditions of approval. Approve the tenant parcel map three-seven-six-three-five, subject to conditions of approval and then recommend approval of the Willisum Act cancellation and diminishment of the agricultural reserve to City Council. Commissioners, you have the following options. Either approve the project with additional changes and/or conditions, continue the public hearing and direct the applicant to make revisions, or deny the project. Staff is prepared to answer any questions for the commission and that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, uh, commissioners, do you have any question for staff right now at this time? Commissioner Hope? You have any questions?
I do, I do.
Yes?
Yes. Um, on the drawings, I know, um, we've talked before about, uh, the sidewalks around for, um, for residents and walking and stuff, so I can't really tell on this map here on the site of it, is, are the sidewalks right up against the street? Or is there a planter between the sidewalk and the street? I see some of it looks like there's a planter between the sidewalk, but then on the north part of that or the top part of that drawing, it looks like the sidewalk is like right up on Limonite, is that, is that the case? And is that how it would be going up over the bridge? Is that how Limonite's going to be?
Yeah, I'm trying to look at the plan, um. This is the conceptual design, Commissioner Hovey, and we are considering very strongly to put the sidewalk away from the, from the street, away from the curb, so, uh, we were thinking in, in the final design would be having a planter area and the sidewalk away from the, from the, from the curb. So, uh, if you look at the south side, you see there's some kind of meandering or a curved sidewalk there?
Yes.
And then continuing with, um, uh, uh, sidewalk, um, to the east. The reason is that it looks like that is because it's a bridge. On the east side, which is on, on the top page by the, uh, north arrow, there is a bridge, it's gonna be. So, we have to.
I was gonna say, I was there today, there's no bridge.
I know, yeah, 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 there's gonna be future bridges, we're gonna be, we're gonna be building. So, um, uh, we try to minimize the width of the bridge to cut the cost down. So, and we are gonna put, uh, trees, uh, across the bridge, uh, at the, at the, behind the sidewalk, behind the curb, so it's gonna be minimal curb and sidewalk and, and the, the bridge deck is gonna be, uh, reduced to cut the cost down.
Okay, no, I just wanna make sure, 'cause older parts of Eastvale have the sidewalk right up against the street, which I feel is too dangerous.
I understand.
And the newer parts of Eastvale are built correctly.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And I just, I noticed that and I just wanted to make sure that, um, that it was caught early.
Yeah.
That's all.
Sure, we learn, we learn to, to correct that problem in the future.
It was done by the county before, so I don't blame you guys.
Commissioner Hovey, one, one of the things that we're gonna be looking at as, is how do we enhance the bridge crossing for pedestrians and people wanting to, to make that trail connection across or the sidewalk connection across that trail, so we will be looking at some kind of a physical barrier across that trail, uh, that bridge so that if it's right up against the travel lanes, we could put something a little bit more vertical to, to separate the sidewalk from the travel lanes to give a little bit more protection. Uh, um, there's a lot of ways we can do that to design a bridge, but that, that is the goal, is making that bridge a, a connection, um, back and forth across, in, in addition to the trail bridge that will be north of, of this bridge as well, so, um, we're going out for RFP probably in the next two or three days or, or within, before the end of the year, um, to, um, do the design for this, 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 uh, Kukamungut, uh, Creek Bridge Crossing. Um, and so probably, it'll probably be executed by March or April, maybe May timeframe, and then it'll take about, um, eight to twelve months to, to, to design and then it will be ready to construct should the development projects or the city or, or RCTC or whatnot, we have a whole bunch of funding that we're starting to accumulate to get this bridge constructed in the next two years.
Excellent.
Thank you. Commissioner Lee?
Okay, I have several questions on this project, I was a little bit confused.
That is for staff, right?
Yeah, it's for staff, yeah, I, I have comments separate.
Yeah, this is your questions.
Just for, uh, questions for staff, um, so overall, um, are other planning areas approved, so, um, have similar development approvals? Or is, is this the first one for the Ranch, recommend?
No, all the other buildings out there have already gone through major development review, so they were, they were all approved by the planning commission.
Okay, so they were done prior to me being on the planning commission, I guess?
Yes.
Okay, all right, so, uh, so with that said, um, there's, so I was kinda reviewing the specific plan, uh, document today, um, and there was some inconsistency that I wanted to kind of, uh, ask questions on. Um, I guess Site One, um, or site, Planning Area Seven, um, the specific plan outlines the access, uh, to be from the north, from the Moon Place. Um, I don't know why, what, what happened there as to what, why the access has changed.
Well, the applicant is here, he can maybe go into more, into more detail. I, I think it was decided that, given that we're split by the county-city limit line, that this project should stand on its own in terms of access in, into Eastvale, so that's why it's shown coming off of the end of Summit Drive.
Okay, and Joe, um, and you're okay with, um, having one access only, uh, for, for the, for the development?
Uh, yes, at this point, uh, I'm sorry. I believe, uh, when the Chino site is developed, Eric, correct me if I'm wrong here, and also, uh, the applicants, Mr. Howard, um, and team, uh, when the Chino site is open, uh, I think it's a good idea to provide the second access, emergency access with gate, uh, knock locks, so, um, emergency, um, personnel from both cities can access it or. Uh, but in this case, uh, this project has been approved, uh, reviewed by, uh, our fire team, by department, and they are pretty, um, um, satisfied with the, with the, uh, circulations, of course, by adding, um, uh, onsite, um, uh, fire hydrants and all those water system across the project.
Okay, yeah, I was gonna make that comment, uh, to connect to Moon Place anyways later on, um. So, um, next question is in, um, Building Three or Planning Area Nine. Um, so how exactly is that area being connected to the, the trail system? Um, I didn't see a actual picture of how it's actually connecting.
You're asking if there's a?
We're looking for a sidewalk or walkway. Yeah, is it sidewalk, is it a separate entrance or?
I don't see one either. Yeah, well-
Yeah, well currently, and Melinda, correct me if I'm wrong, I I don't believe there's a a proposal to connect directly from this building three site to the trail. That connection, in our view, is gonna come through the property just to the west of this, which would be a retail property and is by nature more open than this, which which is gonna have an enclosed truck yard around the back of it. So ultimately, if you're, say, working in building three, you will go up to the sidewalk on Limonite, walk just a little bit to the west, and then go south through the future development into the trail.
If I may, if you were to go to the, I'm sorry, but if if you were to go to the campus, it you just walk, it's all open, and so the trail is right there. So there is not even a fence and you just walk and it is an industrial center. And so there's like a planter and then you just walk and then there's the trail.
Yeah, I I was gonna make that comment later on, but um that's, yeah, that's that's how I was trying to just trying to understand how the connection was made um was made to the trails. And then um the detention basin, basically, on the south side, um is that part of the project or?
Ye- yes, it is. Detention basin, actually, it is water quality basin, but it yet to be um um uh planned reviewed when the design uh final design is submitted to the city. So uh that is part of the project because uh the entire three buildings all the way from quote-unquote Moon Street go all the way down to the basin has to be um treated, controlled before they are connected to the front door system south of the project. So it is part of the project, yes, yes.
Okay, so my I I guess my question is, because we're providing that detention or or applicant is providing that detention basin, does that diminish the detention basin that we were that we have in the specific plan that's west of it? Um and we do and does that reduce the size of that detention basin?
Do you mean the one is proposed by the ranch?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that is completely separate. The ranch project is, even though it's part of the ranch specific plan, that is the uh the main, the the major part, uh this part is part of the specific plan, but it's self-sufficient as far as uh water quality basin and the storm drain.
Okay, so it's not changing the detention basin that's in the ranch?
It's not, it's not changing, that's a yes.
Thank you. All right, that's my quest, those are my questions, I I have comments later on, so.
You have any question, questions at all? Okay, okay. Commissioner Trump?
So I guess my question is, when we go over all the aesthetics of each of the buildings, and because it's part of the ranch, there was an awful lot of red saying that these are things we want them to improve. And my question is, why isn't our already improved on our drawing so we can look at something and go, yeah, this is good, this is what we want? Because we've been over this many times saying, you know, we're gonna leave it up to staff, which I trust staff a hundred percent, I'm good with that, but this is a big review and this is a big project. So why is this not already done is my question, because we've we've done this more than once. And I don't understand why we could have a picture that has red on each building when we have told every developer, of course, it's nice to have the front look good, but if we're gonna have to look at the back too, please give us something to look at. But yet, no, we're start like we're starting from scratch here. I don't get that. So that that question is to staff.
Yeah, well, Mr. Chair, uh we're not quite from scratch. I think we're very close. There and there are a couple of things to just to keep in mind. One is, well, we have had a very good relationship with the applicant and they've been working diligently. We're on a very tight schedule here. So we are trying to catch up as quickly as we can and simply weren't able to turn around the revised drawings quickly enough for this meeting. The applicant can explain more, but their desire is to have their approvals in place before they close escrow and own the property next month, so that's why we're we're here tonight. So we are working pretty quickly with them. But we we do think that we're we're nearly there. There are some parts of the building with some fairly clear types of improvements that need to get made, so we don't see a problem getting those done. We are we're also dealing with a different architect uh and a different applicant on this, so uh it's it's not as seamless as it would have been if the developer of the other buildings had simply brought the same architect in, so. But we we have had a good working relationship with them and we're we're very nearly there. I think they agree with the changes that we're suggesting and uh we'll make sure that they that they make them before we issue building permits.
Okay, thank you. Uh one other question was, when we when we're looking at built uh walls around the city, we put quite a bit of emphasis on what kind of walls we're asking developers, what we're asking churches, what we're asking, you know, if the schools are coming in, we're saying, hey, we want this size of block wall, we want it to be this high, we maybe we want it fine assisted. So I'm curious, because we were changing some of the fencing on some of the other projects where we had chain link fence, we said, look, upgrade to tubular, and then in the end we said, no, that's okay, they put half block in. So in this one, why would we uh ask on building three for a tubular wall with landscaping? Because we can't really control landscaping, we can't control how quick it matures, we can't control what it's gonna look like in the first, you know, two years, three years, it's gonna take five years to get the vines through all the uh tubular fencing where it looks, you know, nice for the or appealing to the eye. So, you know, what made us decide that is my question? And it is in the Edison easement, I get that, but if we're trying to block, you know, where the trucking loading docks are, why wouldn't we attack it just like we did the other part, where we're already asking to go from six to ten foot walls, the tilt-up walls, why wouldn't we ask for walls here too?
So on this one, Melinda, it was on the southern boundary, right? Yeah, I think the reason there is that it's not adjacent to a street, so it it's opening up onto the Edison court, onto the, oh, yeah, onto the trail corridor and so on. And as Commissioner Hovey mentioned, if you go just across the creek to um the campus, we didn't make them put a wall up along that that boundary. So we didn't see the need for it, there's certainly not a noise attenuation need here, and we didn't see the need for the the same level of screening that we put when you're adjacent to a major street. So if you go right up just north of this, we are asking for a wall along a portion of that, and then again, tubular steel when you get further away, when you don't have a clear sightline from Limonite into the buildings where it's not like right up against the street. So that that was our thinking.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Do you have any question?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I forgot one one question that was very important. So as I was reviewing the SP document, um building one, um there was a there was a very specific uh language in the SP that um reduced, not reduced it, but but controls the intensity, the square footage of the buildings. And it seemed like the maximum they can go in that site was um hundred and fif, what was it, hundred fifty, hundred fifty-six thousand square foot? And this building right here that's proposed is more than two hundred square foot, two hundred thousand square foot, so um it went over the maximum. So I I was wondering what happened there?
Yeah, the plan actually between these three planning areas allows that development intensity to be transferred to move around as long as you don't exceed an overall cap, and we're still with a combination of the three buildings below the cap.
Could you double check that one, because that's not how I read the that section? It's it's as long as it doesn't increase or go above the maximum for that planning area.
We're finding the wording in the specific plan. But you're correct, that the development intensity for planning area seven is one fifty-six nine thirty-seven square feet, and this is larger, but we're finding the part that allows us to blend the intensity between those three planning areas.
Okay, well, you're looking that up, we'll move on and but we'll readdress this before we make any motion. So if there's no other questions for staff, I'm gonna open the uh public hearing. Public hearing is now open. Do we have any blue cards on this proposal?
We have not received any comments.
Does the uh applicant wanna speak? Do we have the applicant here? Please uh give us your name and uh you the company you work with, please, for the record.
Sure. Mr. Commissioner, my name's Tim Howard. I'm representing uh Howard Industrial Partners, the applicant of the project. So I'm here to answer any questions that you have and um we can we can begin whenever. Let me just let me just open with um saying that uh while this is our first project in Eastvale, we have uh more than twenty-five years of experience building this type of product throughout Southern California, and we're proud of the uh the projects that we've completed in other cities from Rancho Cucamonga to all the way to uh San Pedro, Santa Fe Springs. And our forte is uh building park, uh business park development. So uh we've we've worked closely with staff in uh developing the uh concept here, and I think that we're very close, and we're here to accommodate you and and do things the Eastvale way, so I'm all ears.
Okay. Do you have any questions for the app for the applicant, anybody? Commissioner Lee?
Just a one, just one question. Was there any reason as to why um there were no uses or anything like that um kind of accompanied this major development process? Who's coming in, um what kind of business are gonna be there? Because it seemed like it seems like all the buildings are kind of um made towards the light industrial portion of uses rather than business park, which is the predominantly the that the the area.
Uh if you if you look at our application, we're we're processing a parcel map that that divides the property into three standalone uh parcels. The reason we do that is it it allows us to sell each of the buildings individually to companies from Eastvale, if you will, or the whichever city this is the development is taking place in. So what we've found is, by doing that, we get uh we attract businesses that are willing to make an investment in the community. Oftentimes, they uh they have a uh more office space than than the typical warehouse, if you will. But I think here, we've done a good job in 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 mixing up the sizes to accommodate those smaller buildings. We're not coming in and uh and proposing, you know, one large building uh that that while on the face of it might might look appealing to the others, we tend to to focus more intensively on the community. At this juncture, we don't have any users identified because uh uh until the project is improved and we're under construction in in decades, I've never uh attracted anybody in in this size beforehand. You just you build it to to the highest standard you can and then you attract the best people you can. If you do that right, you know, if you make the investment in in landscaping and and the aesthetics, you'll tend to get a better, more intense uh use for the property.
Any other questions? Now, there according to the staff report, there's several areas in your project here where the our staff has seen that it's negligent as far as the design goes. You guys are willing to uh to cooperate with our staff and uh design to make the improvements that are needed to to meet the Eastvale standard?
Oh, absolutely. For example, uh one of the walls that was planted along the driveway, I didn't like the way it looked. I thought that the staff comment was spot on uh with regard to it needed some clear story uh window or something along that to to make it to break the wall up. So I think staff is has been very helpful. This is a new architect for us, and so we're breaking them in as well as with the help of staff. And I think that that um they're very well regarded. And I know that the that the elevations are just some some minor cosmetic uh changes, some additions.
Land tree improvements?
Yeah, yeah, so I'm I'm confident that we'll be able to. Landscaping, we never cut corners on. We spend more money on landscaping than anybody else. So I would tell you, one of the ideas that I would have for your tubular fence when you were concerned about that, um Mr. Commissioner, was that we can, with staff's help, we can specify uh some larger containers. A lot of people will just say, well, I just want, you know, something small put there and it'll grow. Well, you know, you staff can can condition to use a gallon container or a five gallon container, or we can do some box trees in the appropriate areas. But that's one thing that um that we really take to heart is uh is how how it's going to look from the street. And and we approached uh staff about uh about that trail system, and one of the things that we've talked to staff about doing is is perhaps adding uh some kind of park course equipment along there to just get it started so that you know where it starts. And it's a it's a bit of an attraction from a aesthetic. You look towards it, you know that's where the trail system is. So we're we've done that in other projects and it's it's uh something that I'm proud of. So, you know, we're gonna do, we're gonna do our absolute best. I'm confident in that.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you very much. There's no other comments, no cards, nobody wants to speak. So with that, I will close the public hearing. Discussions, commissioners?
Actually, Mr. Chair, I'm sorry, we have an answer for your for Commissioner Lee's question. In section two point two of the specific plan, there is a chapter or section two point two dash two, I think it is. Planning areas may be developed with total square footages that are above or below the planning areas identified target development intensity, provided the maximum development intensity isn't identified in table two one, which we can talk about, is not exceeded, and the project does not exceed one million eight hundred and twelve thousand two hundred seventy-four square feet in total. So we're still below that number. So we're doing what the plan allows, which is to allow individual planning areas to float above what they were originally intended to develop at as long as that cap isn't exceeded. So we did look at that and then our our interpretation is that what they're proposing is consistent with the specific plan.
I guess so. So the overall project cap hasn't been reached?
No, it's not. It's we're we're below it to some extent, yes.
Okay, I mean, I I guess that's more open to interpretation, uh but I'll go with staff because, you know, that language at the end, the the first sentence, um the maximum provided in the table. I'm 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 interpreting interpreting that as the maximum for per planning area, so that you can't go over the planning area maximum, although the intent, because there's two intensities in there, right? One target intensity, one for maximum. So I'm reading that language as target, the maximum intensity, as long as it doesn't go over the maximum intensity, but.
We'll get a lawyer involved and we'll be here all night.
Yeah, I know. So so I'll 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 take staff's interpretation.
Any other questions and comments?
As part of staff, I would agree with that and I would agree with the interpretation that staff is taking.
Okay.
Okay, we got the lawyer involved in this now. Any other comments by staff, I mean by the commission, comments or concerns or guess? Commissioner Lee?
Yeah, so um that leads to me, that leads to this um comment, basically. So um it is my understanding that the all of the the planning areas outside of this in the ranch specific plan has been approved in terms of major development approvals? Or is there any planning areas that are still left?
There still are. Let's get the colored map up here.
Yeah.
Okay, so still to come are planning areas two and five, the two commercial planning areas, and planning area six. So everything else has been done. So planning area three was the most recent, that was eighty-eight thousand square foot building. So Planning Areas 1 and 4, 1, 3, and 4 were done. 2 and 5 are coming in shortly. We've been discussing those with the applicant. He has some ideas that we'll be talking about in more detail with the commission. And then once this, assuming that these three planning areas are done, then the only other one will be Planning Area 6.
Okay, so that leads me to basic math calculation. So if you add all the ones that have been currently approved in terms of square footage, and the maximum you can go is 1.8 million square foot, then you're kind of left with whatever is left for the other planning areas, right? Correct? So does the staff feel okay with whatever is left currently for those remaining planning areas that are to come?
Let me just look at this here.
Now, those remaining areas, aren't they the retail portion of the development?
There's a business park and retail areas as well.
Yeah, I believe we're doing fine. Let me, I'm having Melinda add up the three target intensities for these three planning areas.
So when I calculated it, it came out to be about 1.2 mil so far for all the approved ones. So they're basically enough for 600,000 square foot to play around with in future. So as long as staff is okay with that, I'm going to be okay with it, but...
Yeah, I think we are. So the total target development intensity for Planning Areas 7, 8, and 9 is a little over 434,000 square feet. And these three buildings are 337,000 square feet. So we're 100,000 square feet under here, which can now be used in the rest of the project. So I don't think we'll have a problem. The other thing is to keep in mind, the retail building is going to go in at a lower FAR, so you get fewer square feet per acre on those parcels. So, yeah, we think we're fine.
Okay. Even if we come up with higher or second-story mixed-use type of development in those retail areas?
If we make a major change like that, we might have to go back and revisit that. And that's really just amending the plan and freshening up the environmental documentation.
Okay. So if staff is okay with it, you know, I'll go along with staff. My main comment is because, is related to the use, basically. So all the buildings that are proposed currently, it looks like they're light industrial uses. You have the docking, you have the dock doors in Buildings 1, 2, and 3. You have the rolling gates, which limits circulation in those sites. So basically, those are typical of light industrial uses, right? So, but the sites that we're looking at in Building 2 and Building 3, those planning areas 8 and 9 are business park. And so business park, and I was looking at the specific plan document, allows for medical buildings, allows for, it does allow for industrial, but it also allows for retail uses, quasi-public uses. So in the future, if we approve this, it kind of limits the future uses to industrial, basically, which is a big concern of mine. So at least, at a minimum, I think we should get rid of the rolling gates and the dock doors in Buildings 2 and 3. That's just my comment. But I think if we limit it, I think those two areas will develop as industrial, for sure.
Well, that's, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, to respond to Commissioner Lee, that is something that we'll be talking about, I think, in great detail. The owner of those two planning areas has some ideas about adjusting land uses that we've been talking with him at length about over a period of months. So once he brings an application, and we'll have a very interesting discussion here with the commission about that. But he has some ideas which go directly to your question and whether that should be done in that planning area.
So that person is thinking that to change the planning area into light industrial?
He would like more flexibility to introduce those uses into Planning Area 2. But I think until we have an application, we shouldn't really talk much more about it.
Yes. Okay, but yeah, again, we are currently approving the buildings, so that's why.
Okay, any other comments, questions? With that said, let's handle these one at a time. Let's do the major development review, and then we'll go to the tentative parcel map, and then we'll handle the last one, the Williamson Act cancellation and the diminishment of the architectural preserve, I mean agricultural preserve. So do we have a motion on the major development review? And any motion, I think, do we need to include the suggested conditions of approval that staff has added? Or is that in the motion already?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, Mr. Chair, all of the conditions that we would recommend are already in your package. The only ones that you might want to consider was that, I think, Mr. Charleston might want to talk about changing tubular steel into a different kind of fencing. I would also note that the applicant mentioned that he plans to plant his landscaping using larger sizes. I think we'd like to memorialize that in a condition of approval. So we would welcome the opportunity to sit down with him and talk about what that mix is and memorialize that in the conditions before we present them to him for his signature. And he mentioned putting some park course equipment in that Edison easement detention basin area. If you'd like to make that a condition of approval, too, that that be installed prior to the CFO for, or certificate of occupancy for Building 3.
Can we also add the condition for the future, making sure that we can cite our Building 1 connects to Moon Place? The Building 1 site...
The second, the second access?
When that develops, when Moon Place...
Can we do that right now? That's into another... Make every effort? Yeah.
It's also in our specific plan.
Yeah, it is in our specific plan. The difficulty would be if Chino doesn't want to agree to that, and they say, "Well, we don't want to allow that."
If we could make the wording, make every effort?
Yeah, make every effort.
But we need a proposal right now. Does anybody want to make a motion with proper wording?
No, but could we put some kind of a easement across that?
Yeah, but if you add something, you have to...
Yeah, we're having a hard time coming up with a way to condition this project in conjunction with another project in another city. I think it's clear to us that we want that. I think the applicant is amenable to that. We just, I think we just suggest that we make that happen, but I'm not sure how to put that in writing in a condition.
At least make the site plan show that there could be an access in future, because right now, the driveway just goes around it. It's a simple way of just putting in an access.
How about if we add a note to the approved site plan that future access to the property to the north is encouraged or should be provided if possible?
Okay.
And we can show that on the site plan itself. Okay, thank you.
But we still need a motion? Commissioners, somebody with those...
Are the commissioners okay with the architectural elements?
That's the idea right now. That's what we want. This is a major development review. We're going to, this is a motion for that right now. So do we have a motion?
I make a motion to adopt the resolution with the site improvements that staff recommended, adding also the... The addition of the... The park horse and the larger plant sizes. Were we doing something with the wall or anything like that? Okay.
So we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, to the maker of the motion, does that also include adding the note to the Building 1 about the access to the north? Showing that on the approved plan?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Charleston?
Aye.
Commissioner Hovey?
Aye.
Commissioner Laney?
Aye.
Vice Chair Lee?
Aye.
Chair Oblea?
Aye.
Motion passes 5 to 0.
Okay, the second portion of this will be the approval of the tentative parcel map, 37635, subject conditions of approval. Do we have a motion?
I make a motion to adopt.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Charleston?
Aye.
Commissioner Hovey?
Aye.
Commissioner Laney?
Aye.
Vice Chair Lee?
Aye.
Chair Oblea?
Aye.
Motion passes 5 to 0.
Okay, and the third is to recommend the approval of the Williamson Act cancellation and diminishment of the agricultural preserve to the City Council. We haven't had any, we didn't really discuss that, but it was all in your packets? Do we have a motion?
Yeah, I make a motion that we cancel the contract and diminishment of the agricultural preserve on this site.
Send a recommendation to the City Council?
And just for clarification, it's a motion to recommend approval of that cancellation to the City Council?
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion.
My second?
Okay, roll call, please.
Commissioner Charleston?
Aye.
Commissioner Hovey?
Aye.
Commissioner Laney?
Aye.
Vice Chair Lee?
Aye.
Chair Oblea?
Aye.
Motion passes 5 to 0.
Thank you. All right. That was a good one. Let's move on. Congratulations. All right, let's go on to the item 8.4, nuisance abatement of encroachment on Helman Avenue. Do we have a staff report on this?
Yes, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, I'll be doing a brief report and presentation on this. So a little bit of background as to how we got to this situation. The Corona Norco Unified School District is in the process of planning to construct an elementary school at the southeast corner of Walters Street and Helman Avenue. And as part of that project, Eastvale is requiring certain pedestrian improvements along the sidewalk of Walters and Helman Avenue. And those include installation of concrete sidewalk, ramps, curb and gutter. Here's just kind of a Google map view of the site. The school is going to be on the southwest corner in that open field area. And the improvements are going to be along Helman and Walters Avenue. So Helman Avenue has a right-of-way of 45, or excuse me, 44 feet from the center line. A copy of the parcel map is included in your materials, and here's just a kind of a, you can kind of see it in small print. In the parcel map, you see a 25, you know, foot from the center line of the existing street. And then there's a dedication that was accepted by the county of 19 additional feet, making that a 45-foot right-of-way from the center line, or excuse me, 44 feet from the center line. Now, certain improvements have been constructed kind of within that existing right-of-way. And those improvements include a brick wall, some other fencing. These improvements were not constructed pursuant to an encroachment permit issued by the City of Eastvale, and city staff has contacted the City of Riverside and is not, and Riverside does not have any record of any kind of encroachment permit for these improvements to be constructed within the right-of-way. Here are some photographs of the, kind of those improvements that we're talking about, the brick wall and fencing that is along Helman Avenue there. And here's just kind of an overhead shot showing the location of the right-of-way, the Helman Avenue properties that we're discussing. With that yellow bar removed, you can see where the property line is, and you can see the wall that is within the existing right-of-way. So when improvements are encroaching upon a right-of-way under our city code and under state law, they can constitute a public nuisance because it prevents the agency or the city from making use of its entire right-of-way. Given that these improvements, we don't have any evidence showing these improvements or encroachments were permitted, encroachments by the city or the county of Riverside, then they constitute a public nuisance under civil code, government code, and the city code. The city has attempted on several occasions to try to get notice to the property owner that is listed on the current tax rolls for this property. That included a certified letter back in March. That letter was actually returned to the city without having been picked up. And then we did two in-site visits in November. The letter that was sent, there's a copy of it in your packet, kind of describes the project for which these encroachments need to be removed and the reason for the removal. And the two attempts for site visits, neither of which were successful in contacting the owner of the property. Letters were left at the property. They were mailed certified. They were also mailed via regular mail. And then the city, because those attempts were, attempts to get in touch with the owner to kind of resolve this through agreement were unsuccessful. And construction of this project is upcoming. We decided the most prudent course of action would be to do a nuisance abatement hearing to provide authority for the city to remove those improvements. So that's what we've provided notice for. We provided notice at this hearing on December 5. That notice was provided with an attempt of personal service. So the notice that is included in your packet, that occurred on the 5th. That notice was posted at the property. That notice was also mailed via regular mail. So Chapter 8.18 of City Code does provide the Planning Commission with authority to conduct a nuisance, public nuisance hearing and make a determination regarding the existence of a public nuisance and issue an abatement, or issue an abatement order. The resolution that would be issued by the Planning Commission must include the following. It has to include a basis for the commission's decision, a description of the method of abatement, so how the nuisance would be abated, and the timeframe for abatement. And also must include a statement that the city is authorized to abate the nuisance after that time is expired and to assess the owner of the property damages, or excuse me, costs incurred by the city for pursuing a nuisance abatement action. Here, the proposed resolution that we prepared and is in your packet includes findings, proposed findings, that the encroachments do constitute a nuisance in violation of city and state law, or city code and state law. Contains a proposed order that the owner remove the encroachments within five days of the adoption of the resolution and includes the required statement that the city is authorized to abate and remove those improvements if they're not removed after five days and assess the owner of the property costs that are incurred as a result of this abatement action. So staff recommends that the Planning Commission approve the proposed resolution, declaring a nuisance and ordering the abatement. The options for the Planning Commission are to approve the proposed resolution, continue this hearing with additional directions to staff if the commission feels that there's anything they want us to follow up on commission feels that there's anything they want us to follow up on or, or do additional. Or make a determination that no public nuisance is in this case. So, we are prepared to answer any additional questions you may have.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioners, do you have any questions for staff at this time? I have a question, when, hold on, will you be right with you? When was this easement established? Do you have an idea? I know it's done by, obviously by Riverside County.
Well, it's, it's a, um, the right of way and it was a, when was that parcel map? Would have been in February. It was approved in February of nineteen seventy-eight. It was when that parcel map was recorded or approved. Um, so that included the twenty-five feet. Um, and then the dedication of the nineteen feet.
Okay. Any other Commissioners have questions for staff at this time?
I, I do.
Charleston?
I, so, I guess my question is, I mean, reading it, you know, it's very, the law's on our side, I, I have no issue about that whatsoever. But I guess my question is, when we talk about how many days somebody has to abate when we request them to do something like this, there's going to be a tremendous amount of work to get that out. I, I looking at the property and not trying to make any assessment of, you know, what this person can afford to do. But it does not look like some of the homes that we have in Eastvale. This home's been there a long time. So, if we're going to ask somebody to do something like this, one, they're not going to have the money is, would be my assumption, one. Two, if we're going to do it and try to incur the cost from them, you know, we're going to spend money hauling it off with trucking and digging it out and how are we going to leave this, you know, as far as, are we going to go to the forty-four foot line? And wherever it ends up, and we do this all the time when we dedicate streets and put sidewalks in, we leave it the way we want to leave it. But in a case like this, are we installing sidewalks, are we going to be widening the road, is it going to be the way we're going to do it? So when we're done, they have no choice but to, you know, adhere to what we're doing to it and we will try to get our cost back. Am I reading that right? So it's kind of a co- comment question. There's, there's so much work to be done there to alleviate and take that wall out. I do not see the homeowner responding in the timeframe we're going to put forward. So if we have to do the construction, we're going to do our thing, we're going to widen the street, we're going to put the sidewalks in, and then we're going to tell them, here, you owe us this.
So, the, the option of collecting, the collecting the, the fees is, you know, uh, kind of up to the discretion of, of, of the city. I believe, and, and I think Joe can confirm here, that the work would actually be done if, if the homeowner did not do the removal themselves. The work, I believe, would be done by the school district, is that correct?
Yes, correct, the council, um, planning commissioners, uh, we have conditioned the school, we work with the school basically. Because, um, when the school, round the elementary school is complete and we widen the street, the frontage of this property is going to be the bottleneck, is going to be the soft tooth remaining. Because property to the north is residential subdivision was built like maybe fifteen to ten, fifteen years ago. And, and we understand that the school is going to take a lot of kids from that neighborhood, they have to walk somehow, somewhere on our side. So it's necessity that we have to widen that road and the school district has agreed to do that. Yes, it's going to include curb and gutter, include sidewalk, include, um, uh, maybe not landscaping at this point, but at least, uh, two travel lane northbound and a sidewalk, safe passage for the kids to go to school.
Okay, now would we try to incur the cost of that, or is the school going to absorb that?
I, well, at this point, the school is going to absorb that because it's part of the condition of the school.
Okay.
So, it wouldn't be a situation of us assessing the actual removal costs. It would be a staff decision as to whether or not to pursue any costs associated with this hearing, which are minimal.
That was my only concern, thank you.
Okay, at this time then we want to open public hearing, public hearing is now open. Do we have any speaker cards?
I have not received any speaker cards.
You have to give those to staff, please. And then she'll.
These, these I got in the mail. And they gave me.
Excuse me, sir. Can you please, uh, approach the podium? Approach the podium? And use the microphone and give us your name and your address, please, for the record.
Victor Canato.
Use the microphone, please.
Victor Canato, uh, seventy-five sixty Helman Avenue.
Okay.
Uh, I've been there for almost thirty-five years. The brick wall was, I bought, I bought the house from Farmer's Home Loan Association and the brick wall was already there when I bought the house. So I didn't do anything illegal. Maybe Farmer's Home did. They took it, uh, foreclosure from somebody. And then I bought it from them. And I agreed, I, I sent one of those in that to go ahead and do it. They said that they would do it on that paper. And I told my son, I, heck with it, let them do it, they're going to do it, let them do it. And then, and then later on, then I got this letter from him accusing me of building a wall that it was there thirty years, thirty-five years ago.
Okay. Uh, yes, sir. So, um, you're in agreement that, uh, that is, that wall is illegally placed on the easement?
No, I'm not agreeing that's illegally placed. I'm, I'm agreeing that I'm, I'm willing to let them take it down. That's what it says on that paper.
Okay. Do you have anything else to?
No, I mean, it's, if it's an improvement, I'm, I'm, I'm for it, I don't care, you know?
So you didn't build the wall, but you bought the property with the wall already there?
Yes, almost thirty-five years ago.
Almost thirty-five years ago.
So, thank you. Okay, go ahead. It sounds like, it sounds like the owner is in agreement with us removing the wall, which is all we're, we're looking to be able to do.
I already sent that paper in.
I, 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 we, uh, there may have been some type of miscommunication because we did not receive any communication from you, so I apologize for having a.
I, I was expecting it to be done already or working on it, you know?
So, what would be helpful is maybe if, uh, you can provide, um, some current contact information for city staff, a phone number, email address, however you best would be contacted. I would still recommend that, um, so that we can kind of coordinate the removal of the wall. I would still recommend, um, to the commission to
Proceed with the.
Proceed with the resolution in the event that we're not able to come to an agreement, so that we have that backup option. But it sounds like the owner is, is, uh, in agreement and, uh, and that we won't have any issue going, going forward with, uh, with removal of the wall.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Do I give a phone number to somebody or?
Uh, yes. Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, thi- this isn't about accusing him of, of, if the fence is illegal or, or if he installed the fence, it's just that we need to remove the fence. Remove the road. We're not attacking one of our residents or anything like that. Or accusing of him and that there's some formality language in some of this document that might suggest that, but that's not, uh, wh- wh- what that, what is the case? And so, as long as he complies with us and works with us to get that fence, uh, uh, so that we can remove that fence as part of the the construction project, everything will work just fine.
Very good. And I'll, and I'll chalk that formality language up to the legalese that I wrote. Okay, so, but we do have a nuisance abatement of encroachment on Helman Avenue, um.
But I am concerned with, I am concerned with the part that states that costs associate, associated with the nuisance abatement that are incurred by the city, if any, may be recoverable by the owner. He is agreeing to have it done. It has been stated in this letter that Corona Norco Unified is going to take care of it. I guess my concern is that, my concern is that later there is some mix-up and now there's a lien on his house or he's getting a bill for the removal of this wall. And I want to make sure that that doesn't.
To do it, to do a lien, we would have to go back through this process and have to be approved by the city council. It would, it would be a process, it wouldn't be something that would occur at staff level. That finding per the city code is required to be, it, it needs to be in the resolution or the city code requires it to be in the resolution. But in order to actually proceed with a lien, there would be a, a process before the city council and I don't think.
Our, our goal, our goal is not to lean the property or, or to collect anything, our, our goal is just to remove the fence and get the roadway built. And, and so, it, since we have a willing, uh, a resident here that is willing to work with us in Corona Norco Unified to remove the fence and, and we will remove the fence from his property as part of the construction effort and, and collaborate with him. That, that is all we're looking, but the language has to stay in there a- a- as part of the, of the legalities of this, but we are not, uh, going after him to collect any, any, uh, uh, incurred costs. This is minimal cost, uh, for part of the construction of the roadway. We will take a, a tractor out there and it'll be demolished in about ten minutes.
Well, can't you add into the language that you aren't going to go?
I'm saying it publicly right here and that's all that's required.
Okay.
Yeah. And, and just also. Yeah, yeah, yeah. And, and also just for a little additional information, which I don't believe was in the, in the, my presentation or may have been in staff report. The removal, removal of the wall will not require us to actually go on to his property, we can do the removal all staying within the, the city's right of way.
Okay, so do we have a, uh, um,
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to approve the staff recommendation.
And we have a second? Roll call, please.
I'm sorry, who is the second?
Me.
Thank you. Commissioner Charleston.
Aye.
Commissioner Hovey.
Aye.
Commissioner Laney.
Aye.
Vice Chair Lee.
Aye.
Chair Oblea.
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero.
Yes, just, just so the planning commission, it's completely on the record, Brian Jones, city manager and Chad are, are our assistant city attorney, we are not, uh, going to be filing in a- a- anything on this property, this is, this is, we, we just want to work with the resident and, and, and somehow the communication back from the resident didn't get to us, so we had to take this, uh, form of action. But, um, you know, in, in the future, um, if, if we had to receive that letter or whatever, we would have just been working with him to do that, so.
And, and thank you, Mr. Canato, for, for accommodating.
Yes, thank you very much, helping us resolve the issue.
Oh, no, no, it, sometimes, sometimes things get lost in the mail, so.
But you got to visit us anyway, so. We don't have very many people here, so. Thank you.
Thank you, sorry, sorry if, if it felt like we attacked or that was not our intent. Thank you for being our resident.
This is a first for me, uh, I've been a commissioner in two cities and this is the first time I've ever had something like this coming before me. So this is a first. Alright, item nine, there's no, uh, nothing there for commission business. Uh, item ten, uh, city staff report, anything?
Yeah, I just wanted to talk to you a little bit about, uh, your about your, uh, January meeting, so January sixteenth is going to be your next, uh, regular meeting. We'll have our standard business items. Probably have one project and that's the, uh, in the Goodman Commerce Center. Uh, Mod Pizza is going in the building with Starbucks, they want to be able to serve alcohol, so you'll see a staff report about that. And the council in January is going to get the, a presentation on the results of the restaurant survey that I think most of you probably took part in, I know I did. So, we'll have, uh, city manager's office here again on, your meeting on the sixteenth to give you a presentation on the results of that, because that really feeds into our efforts to attract and encourage that kind of development here in town. Other than that, we, we have just, uh, kind of a minor staff change. Christine Donahue, I think most of you have seen here at, at some of these meetings, uh, who's been our, uh, SEQA lead, is moving on to another company, so she's moving on to other adventures in environmental analysis. And Peter Minigar, who I think you've also seen here at the meetings, is moving up into her position, so we'll be transitioning all of her duties over to Peter. And we'll have a new person, Emily Elliott, uh, who's just recently joined, uh, our, our team, is going to be working on some special projects and probably some development projects as we move forward, so we'll have her come in probably to the next meeting and introduce her to her, so. That's it.
Thank you. Uh, okay. Item eleven, Commissioners' comments, um, Commissioner Laney, do you have any comment? Or any anything to say before we adjourn?
Glad to be here.
Glad you're here. Commissioner Hove?
Yes, I do. On Archibald. When you're driving down Archibald right before you approach River, the restriping that was done there, they just painted over the old striping. So when you're driving and, um, you know, the sun is right there.
The glare, yeah.
Yeah, it, the old striping comes up. So then you're driving and you're like, oh, I'm in this, oh no, I'm in this lane, oh no, I'm in this lane. And everybody's doing it.
Looks like the one eye.
Right, and it's when the sun is, you know, between ten and four, uh, right there.
Did he leak?
And it's, it's, it needs to be, something needs to be done there with that, because you see everybody adjusting their cars right at the light um, to get into the proper lane. Also, I'm wondering on Citrus approaching Harrison. Um, you know, from the high school, you go two lanes. And then right at Sumner, it just kind of goes into a one-lane free-for-all. And then when you hit Harrison, it's back to either right or left. But everyone goes two lanes and then it just sort of goes like this. And is there a way, isn't it supposed to just be?
Westbound or eastbound?
Two lanes?
Westbound.
Okay, we can go out there and take a look at it.
But if they just kept the two lanes going, that would just make it easier.
We might just be missing some striping out there somewhere, so.
It's not, and it's weird because one of my sons was driving there. Car passed on the right when he was in high school five, five years ago.
Okay.
Bam, hit him right in the right side.
Okay.
It was a mess.
Okay.
And so, I guess they said it's not deemed a lane, but yet people kind of treat it like a lane.
Okay, well, let me.
It's a mess right there.
Why don't, I'll ask our public works team to go out there and evaluate the mess.
And my last thing is, um, the seven-eleven on Archibald and Schleisman is, um, is behind my house and in the Albertson's Shopping Center. And it's a mess. Um, all of the, the decals are peeling, the trash cans are disgusting, the, the street, I even took photos. It needs to be pressure washed or cleaned, and I talked to somebody about it and they said they're not allowed to do it. But it's disgusting. Um, I don't think it's ever been cleaned, but the whole seven-eleven needs to be, uh, fixed.
Okay, well, well, we've been working really closely with the regional managers for seven-eleven on, on some other i- issues and so, uh, and, and they have been super effective in, in getting resolved to them, so I will reach out to them and, and let them know um, that one of our planning commissioners would like their seven-eleven cleaned up a little bit and, and I will have them go over and take a look at it.
Thank you so much. That's all I have.
Just so the other, the other thing, it's Archibald, southbound. Just so I make sure I write all this down, Archibald, southbound, lanes jumping all over the place.
Right before River, it's just the striping.
Grind it off, not just, not paint it.
For River.
And then Citrus approaching Harrison.
Citrus, westbound. Westbound.
Between Sumner and Harrison. It's just going westbound, it's just a a free-for-all right there.
Okay. We will get out there and take a look at those things. Hopefully we can get some resolve.
Okay. Uh, Commissioner Charleston? Any comments or?
Uh, my comments would be a thank you, it's been a great year. We, we accomplished a lot. I'm really happy with what we accomplished, we've had some changes, but the city is still going strong and I'm really proud of that.
Yes.
So, the planning department, you guys really have done a great job. We've, we've had some of the most controversial times with some of the projects we went through with. And we've had some pretty tricky stuff too. But we battled through it, so it's, uh, it's been fun. And thank you for your guys' support and I'm looking forward to next year.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Yeah, thank you.
Vice Chair Lee.
Alright, so, uh, first of all, Merry Christmas and Happy New Year, because we won't see each other until next year. Also, welcome, uh, to our new commissioner, um, you know, good to have you here. One concern that I do want to bring up is Eastvale Marketplace again. The new Alpolio Local opened and the drive-through and the stacking stuff that we did is is just blow to pieces because the line is all the way to the dentist's office. So, okay, it's good to see the business flourishing, but, um, yeah, it's, it's a mess.
It might, it might ease up though as time goes on.
Yeah, I agree, but.
Now, the T F is gone, so.
It, it's been. It's been every night, even during-
Yeah, it, it, it's when you get a new establishment like that for a drive-through, sometimes right off the bat, it, it, there's a huge demand because everybody wants the crazy chicken, but, but well, the, the, the local part of it will calm down as time goes on, as we open up other new places, the, the people go other places, but we're glad to see their success.
We may have to change it, we might have to go to seventeen car stacking and every-
Yeah.
No. I can't afford that much land in my city for a drive-through.
Yeah, so, but, but I think in the conditions though, I think for stacking, I think there were some things that the management could do.
We do have the ability, yes, Mr. Chair, to work with the app or work with the operator to fix the problems. So, yeah, as Brian said, we'll wait for it to calm down a little bit. We do have regular calls with the company that owns the center, so we'll be talking with them about that and some other things in the new year.
Well, and, and we can also reach out to them and just see if they can have the remote people, the tablet walking out. A lot of fast food do that to help out, so.
When we were there, I think it was opening day, Melinda, they had about a million people working inside the store, so I think they can afford to have somebody go out and help with traffic.
Okay. And then lastly, kudos to staff, it was a great party. I think I saw everybody there, so yeah, you guys put a good party together. You missed it, but next year.
Yeah, I don't know about that comedian though.
He didn't pick on you, that, were you feeling left out?
I did, I did. But echoing other sentiments, we had a great year and I'm looking forward to another great year ahead of us and I want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Be safe. With that said, meeting adjourned till, till January.
If, if I might, if I might just share one little thing, we had a great strategic planning workshop, we got invited down to Silver Lakes yesterday, I think it was, and they have some exciting things on the books coming down the pipeline with what they're, what they're suggesting might be the next stage coach for a country music lineup and in August, which will be called the Tailgate. And so there's going to be some great entertainment options coming to Silver Lakes. They just partnered with a company called Dirt Road Entertainment, which one of the partners used to own iHeartRadio and the other one has the record for the largest deal with Shark, Shark Tank and so with Mark Cuban. So the record for large, it's like it was two million dollars for ten percent of our company and they are bringing in the best of the best from local, regional, international, national to help with rugby, ice hockey. And you go like ice hockey, where's ice hockey going? Well, they're looking at potentially bringing ice hockey, rugby, soccer, equestrians, music events, concerts. I mean, the dynamics of how that property are going to be used and evolve over time is pretty impressive and so we'll be looking for ways to work with the planning commission to figure out how Eastville can capitalize on, on this huge tourist attraction that is being created of Silver Lakes because we'd like all those visitors to enjoy Eastville and spend their money in Eastville as they come into our community, so. And then I also wanted to share that Dick's Sporting Goods signed a lease across the way for Sports Authority, so they're already processing, processing their tenant improvements. So that building has been vacant for about three or four years now and used for Halloween stores and whatnot, is now going to have a Dick's Sporting Goods, so we're really excited about that investment, so. And I'm trying to think of anything else and Chick-fil-A has tenant improvements coming in.
Well, you'll see their, their application for the building itself early next year. We expect their application to come in the next couple of weeks. So we've been working with them on a kind of a pre-application level, Goodman's been working with them, so our intent is to get a design that this planning commission will like and we think you will.
With all that, with all that excitement at Silver Lakes, do you think that will encourage a hotel to come quicker than you might have thought right there at?
We're working with the, so at the strategic planning, Bob Martin from the Lewis Corporation was there to observe and he was very impressed and he said, we might have to rethink how Polopolis is laid out a little bit to capitalize a little bit more on this and-
I would agree.
So, so there, there might be some discussions in early January because my phone has been blowing up since that meeting yesterday. So the, the excitement and the buzz that RJ Brandis is bringing to this region with the city of Norco and, and, you know, oh, I think they're even looking at like a battle of high school bands or something like that there and that apparently Jürgen, the Germany soccer coach is, is, is looking at bringing the Germany team over for a few weeks to train here in Eastville and they might have international soccer things at Eastville High School's football stadium and, I mean, there, there could be all sorts of things. But the number of athletic events on this thing and the number of, oh, the other thing is they, he partnered with somebody that's a Harvard, one of those Harvard geniuses that is creating this app that will have cameras all over the soccer fields and so if your young athlete is getting ready to be, put together their highlight reel for a college acceptance or coaches want to see certain players or their parents aren't able to travel to the tournaments to see their parents within a few hours of the game, we'll get a, we'll get, if they sign up for it, we'll get a, we'll get a message that here are all the highlights of your kid touching the ball or within proximity to the ball and here are all the highlights of the game so that if you missed it, you can see all the goals, all the, all the close calls, you can see all the different things and, and so then instead of watching an hour and a half soccer game and getting the ten-second highlight thing of your child kicking it in the goal, it'll send that ten seconds to you and you can just download it and put it in the highlight reel that you create for the CD or the thumb drive or whatever you send it nowadays to the college coaches. And so it's a, the, the national attention that some of these soccer events are garnering from the college coaches and the international and the pros and whatnot is, is phenomenal that kids in this region are getting exposed to and it's right here in Eastville. So I think there's going to be some great things coming out of Silver Lakes and we're excited to figure out how we can continue to capitalize and, and partner with them to enhance the attraction and the venues and our venues on our side of the city limits so that people continue to sleep in hotels, eat in our restaurants, shop in our stores, you know, and, and as they're staying in the Eastville area, so I think there's some exciting things that are going to be coming down the pipeline, so we're very excited about that. So I just wanted to share that with you, so.
Very exciting. Well, thank you, everybody. Have a great evening. See you next year.